Well, good evening. Today is June nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and you are part of the Rowan County Board of Commissioners meeting tonight. We're honored that you're here, and we hope that you enjoy your time with us, and we appreciate you being here. It's the tradition of this board. We do a few things as we begin our meetings. We'll have a pledge of allegiance. Before that, we're going to have what's called a solemnizing prayer. It's actually a legal, technical term that boiled down means it's not for you. It's for the commissioners. When we come together, we seek wisdom to make decisions that's in the best interest of everyone in Rowan County. So we're going to have our chaplain, Chaplain Taylor, come forward, and there you are, usually in the back. You messed me up. I know, I know. They, they... So it's good to have you here, Chaplain. Commissioners, if you'll join me, we'll get started.
Lord, we thank for the privilege tonight to come in behalf of our county commissioners, Lord, and pray for them. We do thank for them, dear Lord. We've grown to know them and appreciate what they do, dear Lord, and I hope Rowan County does also because they do an awesome job. Pray you give them the wisdom they need tonight in this meeting tonight, Lord. I pray that everything be done and treated in the right manner, dear Lord. Thank for them. We place this meeting and ask you to help them and help us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chaplain Taylor, as always. We appreciate your service. All right, we do have some additions to the agenda. Let me read those in for the record. We've got, what we will add to consent will be item AC. That's department request that, let's see, came from Teresa Sharpless. That'll be AC. The next one will be AD, and that is department request from Finance that was provided to us. Then we have one more from Teresa, and that'll be consent item AE. AE. So I'll add those three. And Commissioner Pierce, you have another?
Yes, sir. On the consent item B, Rowan Transit. I'd also like to add-
Are you on?
Up here. So I'd also like to add that to be put out for bid.
Okay. B.
What is it, Dan?
It's S.
Item S, Mr. Chairman.
Oh.
Got it, got it. Okay. Commissioners, any other additions, any deletions we need to note? All right, then we have an amended agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Some of-
All right, all in favor say aye. All right, then the consent agenda that's been amended is before us, motion to approve the consent agenda.
Some of-
Favor say aye. All right. And then, public comment. Do we have anyone for public comment?
I'm gonna pass all three down, but there's one for public comment.
Okay, excellent. All right, public comment. All right, we have one for public comment. Pam Bloom. Hi, welcome. Thank you for being here.
Good evening. I am Pam Bloom. I'm a resident of Salisbury and Rowan County. I am here to say thank you to all the public school teachers, all the staff and administration, because they, after having been professionally changed, are being faced with challenges to what I feel like is the integrity of their profession. So I would like to applaud our local public schools. I would like to applaud those parents and children who attend them. And I ask, as those of you who look for guidance in many places, to also remember that you are representative of all the people and that we can't do without our public schools. Our economy depends upon it. People who move here and are looking, are looking first at what public schools are doing. And if our county commissioners cannot support our public school environment, then I feel like you're turning the people away. People like my excellent daughter, Doctor, who chose to leave Salisbury because he felt like he could find a better, not a better system necessarily, but a better supported school system in Mooresville, and he's not the only one. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bloom. All right, we'll move on then to item number three. Let me get over to it. I gotta turn a thousand pages. All right, item number three. It is our pleasure tonight to have Nathan Crowell with us. Nathan is a North Carolina 4-H selection to represent Rowan County at the Youth Voice Summit during the NCACC, which is North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Annual Meeting in August. Nathan will provide a three-minute presentation about his 4-H experiences in order to be eligible to participate in this leadership opportunity for the Youth Voice Summit. So would you all help me welcome Nathan Crowell?
Okay. Good evening. My name is Nathan Crowell, and I am a sixteen-year-old Rowan County 4-Her. I am here tonight because I am Rowan County's youth delegate attending the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Annual Conference, and I would like to tell you how much 4-H has helped me grow. I joined 4-H in November of two thousand and eighteen, or rather, my mother put me in 4-H. I was a shy eleven-year-old and was quite reclusive, and I didn't really want to do a whole lot in 4-H. I served as the treasurer of the Westerland 4-H Explorers Club in two thousand and nineteen, and that was because my mother told me I had to run for a club office, and I went for treasurer because the only thing I had to do was state how much money our club had, which was a number our club leader gave us. My mother, however, kept pushing me to do more, and eventually she talked me into club president in two thousand and twenty. By July of two thousand and twenty-one, I finally started to open up and do more things in 4-H. I did a 4-H presentation that year and also attended various virtual events, such as 4-H Congress and Teen Retreat. In two thousand and twenty-one, I was elected Rowan County Council President, which is a countywide club for teenagers in Rowan County to help plan all county 4-H events. By two thousand and twenty-two, I ran and was elected as the president of the South Central District, which is made up of nineteen counties of North Carolina, and this year I actually got to plan Congress and Teen Retreat. 4-H has turned me from a very shy, reclusive person into a very social public speaker and leader. 4-H has taught me many things, from soldering to showing chickens, and I have met a lot of friends through 4-H. 4-H has helped make me into the person I am today. 4-H has also taught me a lot about citizenship, parliamentary procedure, community service, and government. All 4-H clubs have to plan, organize, and carry out at least one community service project each year to maintain their club charter. While serving as president at the various levels in 4-H, I have had the opportunity to plan, organize, and participate in many community service projects. I attended Citizenship North Carolina Focus in two thousand and twenty-two and learned a lot about our state government, the voting process, and how to be a good citizen. I am attending Citizenship NC Focus again this year, this week. My future plans in 4-H include running and serving in a state-level officer position and continuing to compete in presentations, as well as continuing the great educational opportunities 4-H has to offer at the county, district, and state levels. I look forward to learning more about county government and county management by attending the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Youth Voice in August. I would like to thank you for allowing me to, the opportunity to participate in this event as the youth delegate representing Rowan County 4-H. And I would like to encourage you to attend the Youth Involvement Breakfast Saturday morning on August twenty-sixth. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and let's give him a round of applause. Yes, sure.
Well, while we're all getting together, Nathan, I just want to tell you that I'm an old 4-Her too, and my dad was, and my sons were, and all the things you talked about as far as leadership and building confidence, I went through those too. So hopefully someday you'll be sitting up here or in the state legislature.
Somehow I can't picture him as being shy. Did a good job. All right, Finance Director Anna for financial report.
Okay, so we'll start with our cumulative expenditures. And for May, through the end of May, we're at, we're up six point one million over FY22 or four point four six percent. Moving on to the revenues, unless you have questions. On the revenues, we're up thirty-six point four million or twenty-four point six five percent. Move to, and that was also through May. We'll move to the cumulative property tax. Through April, we are up three point one million or three point five eight percent. Moving to sales tax, through February, we're up two point eight million or twelve point zero one percent. And then looking just at the month of February, it was up approximately two hundred thousand dollars or seven point four five percent.
All right, any questions for?
Revenues had some loan proceeds in there.
Yes, there are some loan proceeds in those revenues that we have not spent yet because we're waiting on the equipment to all be delivered. We also have the ten million in ARPA in there that we've talked about in the past, and if that money's not all spent this year, it'll roll into deferred revenue, and we'll have to spend it next year because we have, you know, we're going to have to spend that money. So, yeah. Right, and there's probably some other lag in there, too. And, and part of that thirty-six million is also, of course, the property taxes that are up and the sales taxes that are still up. So that's some other numbers that are part of that number.
All right, any other questions? Any red flags?
Not that I'm aware of.
All right, let's move on. Twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, Proposed Budget Manager Church.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to pass out the recommended adjustments to the budget that was presented at, in May. See if I can share one. So the recommended adjustments to the budget include, as, as presented on this sheet, would be thirty-seven thousand dollar increase to the Rowan Rescue Squad. The next one is sixty-four thousand, two hundred and seventy-dollar increase for social services, for technology services, ninety-seven thou- the next one is ninety-seven thousand, four hundred and seventy for professional services, for social services. These, both of the, the last two are for a company called North Woods, which is a scheduling. It's a scheduling software. As I understand it now, they're, they're using Excel. Is that correct, Micah? Okay. And both of those have a reimbursement rate that exceeds a little over fifty percent from the state. The next one is consulting services at thirty thousand. That is in the general government part of the budget, but the purpose of that will be to use it for staffing study for social services. The next, and, and just as a reminder, you know, with the, the new Medicaid expansion, we'll be coming back to the board for new positions throughout the year as that unrolls. The next position, I mean, next position, the next line is a new position for the Sheriff's Office at one hundred and fifty-six thousand, four oh six. That's for a detective who is a sergeant.
That, that's, I mean, can you elaborate on that?
Yeah, that would include the salary and a new vehicle and, you know, outfitting and all that. So it's not reoccurring, although the vehicle expense is, but it would be, you know, prorate about four or five years, however long it takes to need a new vehicle. That's not going to have that. Yeah, but it, it's not going. X. The actual salary for that position is fifty-eight thousand dollars. And, you know, Medicare, you want me to go through all the lines or, but, you know, that just goes to show you, you know, with all the benefits and salary and benefits is eighty-seven thousand, nine, nine hundred and forty-two.
Also for crimes against children.
And then, you know, you have the vest and a lot of other miscellaneous items that ends up, but the vehicle and everything else is needed is sixty-eight thousand, plus the eighty-seven is one hundred and fifty-six. The next item is to increase paid military leave from one hundred and thirty-six hours to one hundred and seventy-two hours. There's not a dollar amount there, but this is something that Commissioner Casky wanted to include. So, you know, by passing the budget, this would indicate that would be the new amount of hours of paid military leave. The next item is to purchase four new vehicles for the Health Department at one hundred and fourteen thousand. And that's for the environmental health employees. The next item is Woodleaf Park Capital Assets of fifty thousand. The next item is a new position at Parks for a park maintenance, number three, and that's sixty-six thousand, five hundred and forty-seven. And the next increase is a new part-time position for Solon Water Resource Conservation Asemen Specialist at thirty-three thousand, six thirty-three.
Thirty-five thousand.
Okay. And if, if the board chooses to accept those changes, then what you would do is approve the, the general fund budget as presented with these following changes, and it would decrease the contingency appropriation from seven hundred thousand to forty-eight thousand, six, seven, one. So you're spending all your savings tonight, not savings, but, you know, the, yeah, the contingency we, we put aside, but we did, we did that, you know, we, that's normal. It allows us not to have to use the, you know, to go back and adjust the, the numbers in the budget other than this one.
So there's no additional money for the vacation station and a couple other items?
No, ma'am.
So if we wanted to add that during our discussion, where would that come up?
Which, which, which line item do you know, I mean, or which, you know, which part? I can show you where it's, if you'll turn to page forty-two. Oh, no, it does not include that. Yeah, one hundred and nine, in the, that we got it last week. No, ma'am, it does not. There is, I mean, if you wanted to add that, I could, I could look and see another line up that could be adjusted. Let me find it. I saw it earlier, one oh three, so.
And what pages are the special appropriations on?
They're on page forty-two.
These are all vehicles?
Hmm?
I'm on the wrong page, sorry. Oh, there it is, all right.
An email. That, that's my fault, I'm sorry.
We, we, that's one we can come back to during the year. It's, it's during the year. Yeah. We can come back to that. All right, those are the adjustments that we have. If there are not any others. So maybe some guidance from page staff?
Yeah, so if, the next, the next thing is to have the public hearing.
Yeah, okay.
And then after the public hearing, if the board wants to adopt the budget tonight as presented with, with these changes, you would make a motion starting with the general fund all the way through the ARPA fund to prove as presented, with the exception of the general fund, you would say as presented with these changes that were discussed.
All right, everybody ready for anything else from y'all? All right. Well, hey, we're going to open the floor for a public hearing. We've got folks that are-
That, that means we don't have to have a public hearing. I don't, I don't think anybody came forward, Mr. Chairman.
We thank you for your comments. We'll close this public hearing. It says that you should be in a sturdy building, so you are. I think we're good to go. All right, we're going to start our public hearing, and the first person to sign up to speak is, is Connie. Connie, if you'll come forward. Thank you for being here. And we like your shirt.
Connie Byrne. I live on two sixteen Goldson Street in Kannapolis. I am a Rowan County resident, and I have been coming to these meetings for eight and a half years now. There has been a lot of discussion about the increased property values and how that's going to affect our tax rates. There have been calls for us to go to revenue neutral. However, that does, if you know anything of macroeconomics, it does not take into account the increased expenses that the county faces over the next four or five years for increased buildings. You know, we have to maintain our current and future educational buildings and other properties. We have to, you know, do pay raises. We have to buy new equipment. My taxes definitely, even at fifty-eight point five oh oh eight, is, anyway, at the reduced amount are definitely going to go up by about three hundred and sixty-five dollars. I also happen to live in the city of Kannapolis. They have not reduced their rate at all. It is staying at point oh oh six three. My taxes for Kannapolis alone are going to go up thirteen hundred and twenty-nine dollars. My entire tax bill is going to go from sixteen eighty-four to, let's see. What was the total? Two thousand five hundred, two thousand, two thousand five hundred. If I were not over sixty-five and in an income range to where I can get a deferment, I would be paying an additional eighty dollars a month on my mortgage. If you're over sixty-five, there is a limit to what you pay on property taxes. It happens to be five percent. Yes, I will have to request that referral, deferment every year, but that's a hell of a lot better than what I'd be facing. I'll be facing just eighteen dollars a month increase on my mortgage thanks to the decrease in the rate for Rowan County and the state deferment. I urge anyone who is in that age range to please talk to the tax assessor and see what they can do for you. I want to thank all of you for what you do. You have done your best. There isn't anyone in this county who is not dealing with increased property taxes. It's a fact of life, and I know that you're doing your best to keep the hurt as low as it is.
Thank you, Connie. The next one is Kristin Swilly. Welcome, Kristin.
My name's Kristin Swilly. I'm a former Rowan Salisbury Schools educator here to speak on behalf of a continuing Rowan Salisbury Schools educator. They have written a letter that they would like to deliver to the Board of Commissioners. Dear esteemed members of the Rowan County Board of Commissioners, I'm anonymously writing this letter in an attempt to have my voice heard as a current public school teacher in Rowan County without the risk of losing my job. I'm a veteran teacher, and I am fully invested in the interests of all students in Rowan County and feel the need to advocate for the voiceless. As you know, seventeen percent of all students entering kindergarten in Rowan are actually kindergarten-ready. This means that eighty-three percent of our parents in Rowan are unaware of how to prepare their children for school, or they just don't have the access to the resources to aid in the process. This coincides with the data that shows that thirty percent of our parents have a degree in higher education or a certificate in some sort of trade. The data should translate to the absolute necessity of having an abundance, if not an army, of highly-trained teachers, counselors, mentors, and professionals in our Rowan Salisbury Public School System. Unfortunately, I wanted to tell you that the reality is quite the opposite, and the lack of adults in our public educational buildings is at an all-time low. and the lack of adults in our public educational buildings is at an all-time low, and it is unsafe. The time now is to attract more educated professionals to work at RSS with a more attractive teaching supplement and all of the incentives that we can provide. The following is a snapshot that I witnessed this year, and I am just one educator at one school. I had an average of thirty-two students per core class, but my other colleagues on my grade level had thirty-five in tested core areas. Because of teachers leaving Rowan Salisbury Schools during the middle of the year, different colleagues from the same building had sixty students at one time in tested areas. In addition to the absence of core teachers, the lack of E C teachers in the building was horrific, and there was a void of services in one particular classroom for over half of the school year. This is obscene and is alarming when such a large percentage of our children come to us in Rowan County needing meals, positive adult relationships, mentorships, counseling, mental health access, and of course, solid teaching. Needless to say, I had an inordinate amount of students with high needs this year. Literacy ran the gamut. Mental health issues were off the charts, and social emotional skills were sadly deficit in the majority of our students. However, I want to share the day in the life of one of our students with you, so you can understand the importance of this letter. Love spent the first half of the year depressed and not working on any of the classwork for all classes. He slash she did, however, spend many hours trying to figure out his or her identity. He or she went back and forth from boy to girl multiple times. He slash she went from gay to straight multiple times, and by the end of the year was cutting himself or herself. The high-needs child was in a core class with more than thirty students per day and had an elective class where thirty of the teachers left mid-year. With no sub, three out of five days of the week, I'm sorry, I should have said three, not thirty, um, with no subs and three out of five of the days of the week, the class would shut down and everyone would be funneled to the gym. This is where seventy to ninety students would be stored and monitored by one poor P E teacher for an hour. Can you imagine the chaos every day for love and his and her classmates? Love and all students of Rowan Salisbury Schools deserve better, and they need your help in order to attract and retain professionals in Rowan and to build a massive team of highly-qualified specialists, mentors, role models, counselors, and teachers. We must invest today in order to make our schools a safe place to educate, enlighten, and inspire future generations in our community. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, an advocate for the Voiceless. Thank you.
All right, thank, thank.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. All right, next, Tracy Walser. Tracy, welcome.
My name is Tracy Walser, and I am a Salisbury and Rowan County resident. And I just, first of all, I wanted to thank each and every one of you for the effort and work that you put into compiling the budget for this upcoming fiscal year. I know that it is not an easy task. But unfortunately, the pay and the pay supplements that we provide to our teachers and to our public education system is not keeping up with our surrounding counties and surrounding states. Teacher recruitment, as you've just heard, it's increasingly difficult. The teachers we attract gain valuable experience here in the Rowan Salisbury School System. They stay for a couple of years, and then they leave for better opportunities and better pay. When we have increased vacancies in our staff, our students are the ones that suffer. I'd like to see us, all of us, and that's not just the county commissioners. That includes the Rowan Salisbury School Board. That includes North Carolina State Legislature. That includes parents, teachers, all of us come together to provide, to provide better support financially for Rowan County public school teachers and staff. Rowan County, as I've talked to Greg before, has the potential to be better economically. We have so many fantastic assets here in our county. In my opinion, we can only grow economically if we have a superior education system. I would like to ask the county commissioners to revisit the budget and to see if there's any way that we can invest more in this upcoming fiscal year to support our public schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Next is Sandra Sullivan. Sandra, welcome. We're glad you're here.
My name is Sandra Sullivan. I am anticipating the beginning of my thirty-fourth year of teaching at Salisbury High School and am myself a product of our RSS system from Overton to Knox to Salisbury High. I also serve as site support leader to serve our beginning teachers at Salisbury High. We have approximately twenty-three beginning teachers at my school, which forces me to add my voice to this conversation of our supplement increase. Speaking during public comment is not my usual mode of operation. However, our state of North Carolina has put all teachers in a position to fight for every step of gains we achieve. As I meet near the end of my career, I hope to see our Rowan system continue to recruit highly-qualified teachers and retain those that will work with them as they grow. We place a burden on experienced teachers if we can only attract those with no experience, little qualification or certification. We are in danger of actually losing those highly-qualified teachers who do not need to travel far for more compensation. During this school year, I served on a teacher-led design team system recruitment and retention committee at RSS where we consider different avenues to recruit and retain. Yet with the state of our economy and little action being taken in our state legislature, our county must take note. The money will be the loudest voice to increase the quality of professionals in our schools, which in turn attracts newcomers and businesses to our area, which will cause our community to grow and thrive. Thank you for allowing me to speak, as I am passionate that our RSS system must thrive for our county to prosper. Other counties have heard the call and met the need. It is time for Rowan to also increase our supplement. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra. Next is Jason Walser. Jason, welcome.
Hi, my name is Jason Walser. I'm a resident of Salisbury. I am married to the lovely lady, lovely lady you heard from two speakers ago. I'm a grateful parent of two children, one at N C State, one at East Carolina. They are products of our public school system. They got a great education. I want to thank you for the education you've given them. I want to also thank you on this budget. You're proposing significant funds for Rowan Cabarrus Community College and a bond referendum. You're also proposing significant funds for Knox. I think that's exciting and huge, and you deserve a lot of credit to getting us to this point, especially for Knox. I'm thrilled, and I'm grateful, and I'm appreciative. I know it's hard. I know that we're looking at significant, significant resources and needs in this community, and we have to be cautious of the tax rates, but it sort of feels to me like we have a three-alarm fire, maybe not a five-alarm fire, but a three-alarm fire. We can't hire teachers. Average rent here is twelve, thirteen hundred dollars a month, and starting pay is still less than forty thousand dollars for a teacher. We're trying to attract young professionals. They can't afford to live. They're working second jobs. I know it's not fair to put all the burden on you. You're responsible for only about six or seven percent of teacher pay. Most of it comes from the General Assembly. I'll have you know, I have reached out to Senator Ford and Representative Warren as well and shared these thoughts. We have got to do better. If we're gonna have a bright future, as Ms. Walser said, we've got to have teachers in the classrooms, and we don't. We just don't, and I think it is an all-hands-on-deck problem. We have a competent, in fact, we have better than a competent. We have a fantastic superintendent. She told you she needed forty-five million dollars to fill the positions to educate the eighteen thousand five hundred students, students she expects. You're not giving it to her, and I think if you don't do that or get a little bit closer, I think she asked for four-point-three million dollars for subsidies for the teachers for supplements. If we can't get a little bit closer, I think that we risk not having positions this year. And next year, just as rent continues to go up, we're gonna continue to not attract and lose more teachers. So please do any and everything you can. Again, thank you for all that you've done so far. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walser. Uh, next, Cindy Fink. Cindy, welcome.
Thank you. I'm Cindy Fink. I'm a resident of Salisbury, Rowan County, and I'm the Executive Director of Meals on Wheels. I'd like to thank you for the allocation that we got for this current budget year, and we're especially grateful to Commissioner Pierce for recommending the increase last year after the budget hearing. Your allocation helped us to provide over one hundred thousand meals through our programs. Our goal is to serve homebound seniors with home-delivered meals and mobility-challenged seniors with our grocery program. Our Charlie Tablet Program encourages social engagement. And in cooperation with Rowan Helping Ministries, we deliver USDA food boxes to their clients who have no transportation. We're currently serving approximately three hundred individuals every day. One hundred of these individuals receive free, fully-subsidized meals. The other two hundred clients pay based on a sliding scale, and we currently have fifteen individuals on our waiting list. Our total meal program cost in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four will be nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Last year, I told you that our direct meal cost had increased by seventy percent, seven zero percent. Unfortunately, it has not gone down. And I request, we ask the county commissioners to provide an allocation of ten percent of our total budget or a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars to help feed seniors. Some years ago, Rowan County determined that the best way to serve seniors was through nonprofit agencies. Rowan County does not fund an aging department or programming for senior services as some other counties do. Rowan County does not directly pay for senior center buildings or staffing. Aside from the match for the home care block grant that's required by the state, the proposed budget includes funding for ruffey homes and meals on wheels at a total of two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. A next-door neighbor, Cabarrus County, with more population granted, budgets over two-point-five million for aging services, senior centers, and meals. We might be smaller in population, but I'd say you guys are still driving a hard bargain. We are a growing county, and our senior population is our fastest-growing segment. We plan in Rowan County for education, economic development, roads, and more. Now it's time to plan for and fund our senior programs. You can get a head start by allocating a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars to home-delivered meals for homebound seniors today. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Um, next is Karen Puckett. Karen, welcome. And thank you for being here.
I'm Karen Puckett, and I live in Rockville, and although I just retired this year, woo, woo. Um, I've spent many years as a teacher in Rowan, in the wonderful Rowan Salisbury School District. Today, I want to talk to you about the need for fully-funded schools here in North Carolina. What would that look like? Fully-funded pre-K through twelve? Well, the North Carolina Association of Educators is advocating that the N C G A, General Assembly, fully fund public schools by raising student funding to fifteen thousand dollars per pupil. That's a combination of local, state, and federal funds. That would cover mental health services, physical health services, such as psychologists, counselors, social workers, and nurses, onsite after-school tutoring with transportation, universal breakfast and lunch, instructional materials, and fair compensation for educators, because our schools are losing an alarming number of teachers to other counties. Guilford gives several thousand dollars more a year to teachers, and so it's easier just to stay up there. They get other states, or they go to other career paths, like my daughter just recently did, and I was heartbreaking. She left teaching after a long family tradition of teachers, but she couldn't afford to continue teaching, so she's doing something else. Rowan Salisbury Schools have a rich history and tradition that includes positive growth and change. My in-laws, who would have turned ninety-two this year, attended Rockville High School, and is now the building of this Rockville Elementary School. And my mother-in-law continued to Taba College, where she got her teaching license and taught in our local schools for decades. She tells me, she told me that she was the first white teacher in an all-black school in Rowan County or in Salisbury City Schools. Then years later, when larger, more robust regional middle schools and high schools were built in the early sixties, my husband was able to later graduate from Irwin and East, as did our two daughters many years later. My husband is from Rockville, loves Rockville. He shares countless stories about former classmates who came from modest but hard-working families who leveraged their public school experience to receive college degrees or post-high-school training and achieve impressive and successful lives. For our family, public schools have been a blessing. The daughter who left teaching is now getting a master's at U N C G, and our other daughter graduated from Wake Forest Medical School last year. I am asking the commission to take the steps to participate in the continuance of a robust system of schools by accepting the Board of Education's budget requests and to encourage our state lawmakers to increase school funding. Strong and vibrant public schools will ensure that an even better future for the citizens of Rowan County by making us more business-friendly and competitive. And as one of the largest employers in the county, like most counties, it's important to make sure that people are paid well, so they can spend well. So the time for fully-funded public schools is now, and I thank you for having me.
Thank you, Karen, for being here. Our next speaker, I'm sorry, I can't read the last name, but Brian, I think. Welcome, Brian. I'm sorry. Oh, no, it's fine. Uh, it's better. Better than mine, so we're good.
My name is Brian Wimes. I'm a resident of Salisbury. You've all, you have all, thank you for being here. Thank you for your work, first of all, Commissioner Eds, fellow commissioners. Uh, you've all heard about the public school issue. I don't want to repeat what's been said. It's been said more eloquently than I could. But back in nineteen ninety-seven, there was Leandro versus the state of North Carolina, where Hope County, Halifax County, Robeson County, Vance County, Cumberland County all sued, came together and sued the state of North Carolina for not adequately funding public schools, and specifically rural poor schools. It was in nineteen ninety-seven. For twenty-five years, our state legislature has sat on that case. Through Democratic, Republican administrations, the legislature just has not done what they were mandated to do by our state Supreme Court. Can't really control that. What we can control is the local supplement and funding our public schools properly. There's eighteen thousand five hundred students in our Rowan Salisbury School System, three thousand teachers. That's twenty-one thousand kids that are, and parents, staff, teachers, that are in our public schools, a hundred and eighty-one days out of the the average local supplement in the state of North Carolina, the average. We're not talking about Wake County or Mecklenburg County, just the average. It's five thousand one hundred and twenty-three dollars. Ours here in Rowan County, half that. Half the average.
What's the number?
Two thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight. North Carolina ranks forty-sixth nationally in teacher pay. That bothers me. Again, we can't control what the state does directly, but we can help locally. I plead with you to fund our schools fully and increase our local supplement. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Now, that's all we have that has signed up. Is there anyone else that came late and didn't know you needed to sign up? Not you. Yes, Alan, did, did you want to speak? Come on up. Yeah, he's, he's my friend, so I can kid with him. How are you, Alan?
Good. Alfred Wilson. I'm a resident of Rowan County, and I I've heard a lot of a lot of important things said here. Um, my parents were teachers, my wife a teacher. I have a son-in-law who's a teacher. Uh, I believe that the most important thing we can do as a society, as a civilization, is to pass on our collective knowledge to the next generation. And anything that we can do, that we here in this room can do to do that, I'm for. Thank you.
Thank you, Al. Is there anyone else? Uh, well, we're, we, we have to have you come to the microphone because we're recording, so if you want to come forward, please, please do that.
Good evening. My name is Thomas Parsley. I was wondering if you have it on your agenda to settle the road.
Yeah, that'll be, that'll, that's later in our meeting. Yep, we'll, we'll have a public hearing in that part, and y'all can speak again if you like. All right, is there anyone else? Going once, going twice? All right, we'll close the public hearing. All right, nobody else has jumped out there to talk and I'm usually the one to throw my neck out. Let me talk to the teachers for a minute. So obviously we find ourselves in almost an impossible catch 22 this year. For the first time that I, I can recall, we've had this huge revaluation, which by the way is the lowest rebound numbers of anyone in our, around us. So it's nothing to brag about or to sulk about. We ended up at 45.96%, something like that. And those who are on the same revaluation schedule as we are had much higher. But yet, so we have received lots and lots of calls on varying sides. I've had friends call and I relish those conversations that are, so you know, calling to advocate for schools. I've had friends call that screamed at me for a 46% increase in valuation. So I'm in between friends. The only one that hasn't screamed at me about that, but maybe other things is the lady I'm married to, so. So we're caught in this pickle this year of 145,000 people saying, you'd better, you'd better, you'd better lower my tax rate because I can't take a 46% tax increase. And so we gave direction to the county manager to, in a year when it looks like. And we appreciate our department heads and some of them are here today. Some of them are here tonight. And we love those folks, but in a time when the announcement is we'll have a 46% increase, then it appears that we're going to have money left over. And that's certainly not the case. We did sit down with some folks from the school system last week in earnest to have very productive discussions with them. And there's something that we're trying to, we're trying to have an ongoing discussion. So you know, with the school system to understand some things. And so the, the school isn't, and by the way, I appreciate the comments tonight. There's not been any finger pointing and ugliness. And, and I appreciate the comments that there are and they're earnest and they're passionate. Phone calls have been earnest and passionate and no one really has been rude at all. So that really goes a long way. And so we don't do this, we don't do that toward the school system either because we appreciate the administration. I, I appreciate Kelly Withers. Kelly Withers is a friend. I advocated, so you know, for Kelly in the interest of bringing stability to the school system. Members of the school board are friends of ours. We probably have the best relationship between county commissioners and school board maybe ever, but I've not been here forever like some of you. So I don't know. I know this, we haven't been sued, right? So we, we value, and certainly this board, all five of us, if you don't know, we spend hours and hours every month, Jim and I do, with an organization that we create, we help create with all of the school leadership called the Rowan Education Collaborative. And we meet to talk about how do we align our K-12 with Rowan Cabarrus and through Livingstone and Catawba as well. But under the watchful guiding eye of economic development professionals telling us what our community needs. And so we are deeply involved in the discussions of education in Rowan County. And I could, I could spend quite a bit of time telling you about through that group, a lot of the changes that have been made, which are really good. So I want to talk to you about something technical. And I don't want to lose you and I, I'm not, you haven't pointed a finger at us. I'm not here to point a finger at anyone absolutely in the school system, including our friends, our friends in leadership. But we're trying to figure out things just like you are. And we had a very positive discussion last week where we had, we feel like were fair questions. And the questions we think are pretty simple. And so I want you to hear what we're trying to understand as we continue to have requests for more educational dollars each year. Jim and I often kid that any meeting we walk into, we are the least knowledgeable in every boardroom we walked into, every meeting we walked into. I look at Shane Stewart here, one of our, our planning guys. We sit down with Shane and Ed Muir and we really don't, they're talking in a different language. Jim and I are insurance guys. We can sell, but we are not PhDs. And so we are often at a disadvantage in any room we step into. We are the least knowledgeable attorneys, engineers, professionals, and then you got two insurance guys, right? So we're always trying to catch up as quickly as we can. As we met with the school system, and I would imagine some of them that are watching tonight, and you're, you are represented well. As we met with the school system, we have a couple of questions which we think are pretty basic. We understand that the school system, we, we give a pot of money to the school system. Then the, the school decides how much of that goes toward teacher supplements. So we don't set out a pot for teacher supplements. We don't control what the school pays you in the way of supplements. Now listen, that is not to to shift focus to the Scott. We're trying to understand things, right? So what the answer that comes back to us is that's correct. The county gives the school system a pot. And out of that pot, we carve out part of it for the school sys, for the supplements. And then the, the, the school board and administration uses the balance of the pot for things that they need to pay for. And so when we understand that, the conversation that Jim and I had was, is it fair? And this is a genuine question because we're not on the Board of Education and we're not part of the administration. Is it fair to, because counties have different capabilities and capacities. A lot of times we get compared to Cabarrus County and I don't know what their revenue is. 100 million more than us? I, I don't know, but it's significant. But what we can compare, we believe, is how much a county contributes per student and per pupil spending. Now, we asked that question to say, is that fair? We didn't say, this is the way you compare it. We asked the question, is that fair? And the response was, yeah, it's pretty fair. So if you're a system of 10,000 students or a system of 50,000 students or like us, a system of 17,680, well, this, I don't know what your be this year, 18,000 students, let's say. That's a way to kind of figure out. We were presented with numbers from other communities where their teacher supplements were higher. So we understood that. Our question then became, if we are paying higher per student contributions than other counties around us, then why aren't we able to pay higher teacher supplements? And that is something that we all looked at each other in the room and said, we got to figure that out. Where is, you know, the, the phrase I used is where is the leak in the bucket? If we're paying in according, this is just information that we had. Rowan, Rowan County was paying $2,353 per, per student. And if we look at other communities, Lenore, 1,230, Surrey County, 1324, Stanley, 1652, Wilkes, 1774, Rutherford, 2324, Bramble, 2765, Franklin, 2863, Carteret, 3288, Davidson, 1398, Randolph, 1482, Anson, 1607, Montgomery, 1626, Stanley, 1652, Cabarrus, 2220, and Union County, 2817. So we're certainly not in the bottom, we're not at the top. So if we take our 2,353, and these are probably last year's numbers, Aaron? Don't you think?
I, I think so. And ours, he, he has ours wrong on the chart. Ours is like 20.
This year we voted at 21.
21, 28, I think, a 5% increase. But I, I'm not sure. I think they didn't look to see that we had cannabis. And that may be why the numbers got weird. But ours is a little lower than what he had on that chart, but still higher than most of them.
So if I, whatever that is, what, what we are, what we focus on from our side is what is the dollar amount per pupil and how do we compare? And so if, if, this is where I just want you to think with me. If, if Rowan County is paying higher per pupil, then why can't we compete on the teacher supplement side? And so that creates a dialogue between the school system and the county. And it's not an answer that we got last week. And it wasn't, well, we don't know, but we don't care. The answer was, you know what? That's a fair question. So let's take our, whatever that number is, 2,200, $2,300. Let's see what that number is going to be and let's see what it is that is costing Rowan County money that's taking away from teacher supplements. So that is a discussion that we're having with the school system is to try to figure out if, if we pay more than everybody, does that guarantee that the teachers get a higher supplement? We don't know that answer. But we trust the school system to work with us to try to figure out where are the extra dollars going now? I said, in all fairness, I said to them, I could construct, let's construct a ridiculous example. Let's use Cabarrus County and let's, and I know Cabarrus County, they've had tremendous growth. They've been forced into building a lot of schools, right? And that's kind of the, one of the big costs of growth is having to build new schools. We're all frankly up here terrified of future growth coming our way. What does that do to us from a budget perspective? But let's say all of Cabarrus County schools are brand new. And isn't it reasonable to look at Cabarrus County budget and Rowan County budget and say, well, Cabarrus County's budget for maintenance is much less than Rowan County's budget for maintenance? Is that reasonable to believe? Right. So is that a hole in the bucket for Rowan County? Yes, it is. That is something I could construct in my mind and saying, if I'm comparing Rowan County to Cabarrus County, my guess would be we are losing some dollars in our per student contribution to costs of maintenance that other communities may not have. So this is a discussion that we're having with the school system. We also agreed that our, the governance says we have two organizations that try to come up with an answer for school funding. If you throw the state in, it's three. But that, that creates a rub between the county and the school system. But I think it's put there on purpose. We, I think kidded, kidded with a school board one time because I don't know if we can do this in North Carolina by law, but give the school system the opportunity to charge their own tax rate. And I think everyone said, ah, no, we don't want to do that. We want you guys to do it, right? Well, if we do it, then we have to, we have to do this give and take with the school system. And it's our responsibility to figure out why the supplements aren't competitive. So that's what's happening right now between the school system and us. It's not to push everything on us and it is not to accuse the school system because we work really well with them and we are working towards some type of answer to figure out. I don't know when the last time the supplemental math has been changed. We have been told that new teachers up into a certain years' worth of experience, we are extremely competitive. And then after that, it begins to fall off. Well, how do you fix that? You fix it by having more dollars in the pot, right? Isn't that what we're talking about? How do we get more dollars in the pot? That's what we're trying to figure out. So that's where we are. Where we are tonight is to debate and discuss and vote on a budget that would cut our tax rate from 65 and 3/4 cents to 58. Will have 140,000 people will cheer that? No, it won't be. There's some folks that want it to be revenue neutral. And that means that there'd be zero increase. And that is, I've been discussing with folks over the last few days and weeks, that that is to ignore the reality of a cumulative inflation rate of almost 20%. The Federal Reserve has raised interest rates 17 times in the last 18 months. That tops 5% higher interest rates. And you have to know, you should know, you need to know, that affects everything that we do in Rowan County is the interest rates have exploded. Someone spoke, I don't recall who, about investing. We, we want to do more for everybody. But I, I will say with not a sense of pride, but a sense of reality that I can't point to any eight or nine-year period of time in Rowan County where more money has been invested in, in education. Since 2015, we built a central office at $8 million, I believe. 38 million? Central office?
Oh, central. I'm sorry. I thought you went.
No, well, no, West Rowan Elementary, 38 million. I think there was another 15 million we provided for maintenance and repairs. And now we're at this, we're at this point in time where two projects that are required of us are now here. In two thousand twenty, we voted to pass a forty-five million dollar bond uh, for Rowan Cabarrus Community College for, um, a, um, innovation complex out there, which, by the way, includes for the first time ever, a a brick and mortar facility for early college. It's a big deal. Um, and everything else that is included out there, I could go into it. When Rowan County was sued ten years ago, part of the settlement was that we would provide, uh, for a new Knox, and we're going above and beyond the Knox by doing a full K aid and committing fifty-five million dollars to that. So in this year's budget, we will pick up an additional hundred million dollars in education investment. So you you add it all up, and we're at a hundred and fifty or a hundred and sixty million dollars, uh, plus whatever current spending there is. And so, uh, we'd like for there to be, uh, more for everybody. We have been focused mainly on economic development, because as companies come here and build like Chewy, build like Macy's, Macy's project has gone from five hundred and eighty million to six hundred and fifty million dollars. Those tax revenues that come in are the hedge against inflation for residential homeowners. That helps us either invest more in education and infrastructure and everything that we've talked about tonight. Everything that, uh, folks are disappointed that they didn't get. Those are things that we can begin, uh, to invest in, like a Cabarrus County does. And so, um, as usual, I talk a lot, but I'm trying to lead you down, uh, the, kind of the path of what the 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 catch-twenty-two that we're in. Um, but also be sensitive to, uh, the conversations with a very capable superintendent and a school board whose relationship we value. And so that's all I have to say about that.
Mr. Chairman. Appreciate everyone that came out and spoke about this issue today. All some valid points are made. I think the bigger picture is not just the supplements, but overall what's happening in education in this country and here. Um, obviously, I'm not a teacher. I I'm in law enforcement. And going on now, we're losing a lot of our, um, officers. You know, I would be curious, school systems doing exit interviews, why are these, why those teachers are leaving? You know, we find a lot of our rookies that come in now, they would usually, in the past, they would try to stay five years to get vested in the system, but, um, they don't even do that now. So most of the ones we leave now, they're leaving from us, and obviously, that's a different, um, animal. But, you know, they're just getting out of it. They don't want to deal with the public anymore. Issues that are going on, disrespecting that sort of thing. I'm sure the teachers are dealing with a lot of similar issues, because frankly, some of the people I deal with are the people that the teacher, parents. I'd be curious, because, you know, I think four and a half million more dollars. I wouldn't say that I would, I wouldn't be opposed to that in the future. Um, but I think we need to look at all the different options. I mean, is it, you know, two hundred dollars more a month for a teacher? Is that, is that going to solve the problem? Or, you know, four and a half million hiring more teachers assistants make the work easier? Would that be, would that be something that's, that that they want? You know, I think this is a good starting point. I don't, hopefully, it's not one of those things where, um, you know, talk about a budget, it goes away, and it sounds like there's meeting scheduled in the future to talk about it. Because we are growing county, we are going to have these issues. Then there's a whole separate set of what, you know, what's the state going to do with public education? But grants where, you know, people are going to be leaving the school, uh, school system and go to private schools, or or is there more charter schools coming? I mean, I think we got to look at the overall, uh, what's going to happen at the state. But I think we do. Need to look at this issue. Yeah, I don't, I don't have anything negative to say about the school system, but there wasn't a whole lot of information in the the packet that we got. All something where nine point three million dollars had been spent on bonuses out of, um, fund balance in the last couple of years for fund balance. So, you know, I don't even know, maybe it's out there and I should know, but I don't know how much funds the school system received from ARPA. Means I heard rumors, eighty-seven hundred million dollars. I don't know if that's true or not, I'm sure. Yes, I don't know. But I think the main thing that I got from this is it's something we do need to work on. Maybe supplements is something we should do, look at in the future. But maybe if there's other, if we're going to spend four and a half million, you know, is there better ways to spend that to help, help the teachers? That a lot of the people that we did, a lot of the rookies that we deal with now, it's not, you know, it's not necessarily pay. My agency is one of the highest paid agencies, and we would have people come to our agency from smaller agencies. But they don't stay very long, they just leave, and they just start looking for something else. But it wasn't the pay that they wanted, it was something different. So, you know, is it a bigger, bigger picture of, you know, respect for teachers? You know, I've had two kids going through the system. Um, I've got one left there. I'll be honest, she's different than the other two. I'm sure she's caused a lot of problems for the teachers. I apologize if my daughter's teachers are out here. But, you know, the people, I just tell you, people, parents, and I'm sure, um, teachers, people are just angry in this country right now. We're in a, a weird time where everybody's angry, everyone's under stress. People feel underappreciated, people feel like they got so much stuff they got to do in a day, they can't possibly get it all done. Um, I know, um, parents just dump their kids at school and say, this is your problem. And we don't have the interaction. I know that personally, I don't, you know, for my younger kids, I don't have as much interaction in school as I did they were in school, and that's bad on me as a parent. But I think we got an issue in this country. Obviously, providing more funding is part of it, but I don't know that that's all of the part. So, uh, I appreciate everyone that came out and spoke. We need to, uh, work on this issue, start talking about it and see what we can do in the future. Because, you know, there could be things, you know, Commissioner Pierce brought up a few years ago about, um, housing for teachers as opposed to, you know, giving more funds. And so, you know, maybe there's some things that we can look at outside the box that we can help recruit people, so. Now, I spoke a lot, I probably didn't say anything, but I do appreciate everyone coming out and speaking about it. And, uh, you know, hopefully, we can have productive dialogue going forward and and try to figure out some of these issues that we need to work.
I want to thank all of the parents and educators that came today. Your involvement is what makes change happen. And we need to get more of the public plus the parents involved in our children's education. Now, these guys are going to really hate this when I say this, but you know, when probably back about eight years now, someone said that it takes a village to raise children? Well, it takes a community. And I agree, Mike, that there's a lot of anger, a lot, and a lack of respect. Our teachers are facing facing things that, you know, my kids are, my kids are gra, you know, their parents themselves don't. But, you know, it's some, something that I never had to deal with as a parent is the lack of respect for our teachers. I think, though, that North Carolina and here in Rowan, you know, being the outsider I am, I noticed when I re- got here that, to me, there was a lack of value of education in general. If we do not educate our kids to the best that we can, then and to get involved in their education, one-on-one, by becoming mentors and that one person in that child's life that they know can be there for them. Because, like, like one of the, um, one of our teachers said, that only eighteen percent of our kids come to kindergarten ready to learn. That's sad, really sad. But it says that we need to come together as a community. I mean, I know that Head Start, they've got a waiting list because they do not have enough teachers. People don't want to go into the teaching profession because they don't feel that people really believe that they are professionals. And they certainly aren't getting treated like professionals. I, um, do have, to me, this, the way that funding happens here is very confusing. And because when you have a local school district, to me, it should be up to that local elected school board to levy that tax that they need to educate our kids. And I know I talk about Wisconsin, this and that and the other thing, until these guys get tired of it, but there is real value there by having that local control. And it's incredibly frustrating to me to see our state legislature bounce back and forth on, well, we're going to have teachers aides this year, but we're not going to next year, and then the following year it's something else. So it's if they are going to continue to be our major source of education funding, then this is another thing our community needs to do. And that is to call and write and what gatherings together to say to our state legislators, we need you to do this for our children. And our children are just such citizens of your district as anybody else that can vote. As my son put it to me once, Mom, just remember, I get to pick out your nursing home. And it did, I did have to pause and think about that for a minute. But, you know, it's a humorous thing, but it's something that we need to think about, especially as fast as Rowan is aging. You know, who is going to take care of us when we get older? Who is going to fill the jobs to, you know? Without a good school system, public school system, we are losing the families of professionals, for instance. My friend, Eric Caldwell, said that there's barely any doctors that work in our county that actually live here. Now, think about that. So, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Vice Chairman, I want to thank you for all the work you're doing, because I think that's part of it. But I think the other part we need to really look at too is raising our raising our subsidy to our teachers. And I know that you were using comparable counties when you gave us examples. But I think we need to look at the old donor hole that we used to talk about. Because we are competing with the Cabarrus's and the Canaplis's and Davie and all the rest of them. With inflation that has just taken off like a rocket, how do young people afford to become teachers? Forty thousand dollars sounds like a lot. But when you're trying to raise a family, it's not. A few years ago, when we were talking about teacher pay, I remember that there was a teacher, and she was a single parent of two, but she was eligible for food stamps. And to me, that is a sorry, sorry question. To me, it's like really a crime that we teach, that we treat our teachers like we do. So it's not just one thing, a lot. And I hope you continue to do your work with Superintendent Luthers. But I hope you also remember all these folks that came to talk to us tonight, that there's probably thousands more out there. Thank you.
You know, budgeting is a difficult situation. Uh, we've got a hundred and forty-seven thousand people or a hundred and forty-nine thousand people in the county. Can't remember which it is. Um, but uh, as I kid people a lot, I'm an expert in education. I taught for eighteen months, forty years ago. But the problems are the same. You don't have people that we just don't value education the way that we did years ago. And I sound like an old fogey, I know. But we don't, we don't value education. You know as well as I do that no matter how much money we put into the school system, until you get fathers and mothers supporting you in the classroom, these kids are not going to have anybody helping them in home, do homework, and they're not going to succeed. And there's nothing that I can do as a county commissioner to change that. I can try to give you more money and try to make life easier for you, but we've had a tough time. We had two years of COVID that tore down the reputations of schools because we tried to do stuff remotely. We couldn't even keep up with the kids as to whether they were taking classes or not. It was a terrible time for this country. And now we're having to make up for it. Reputation of schools is not going to be, um, back to where we want it to be without our schools being successful. I've had grandkids go through this school system and be s- extremely successful. Two of them graduated from NC State. I've got another one going down there. I've got, uh, one in, uh, in di- in different schools. But my kids are not the typical kids because they have father and mother at home, and they have people that support and know how important education is. That's not the way it is in all the school systems or in our school system. But you do have commissioners here who have first night we were in office, we we approved building the central office. first night we were in office, we, we approved building the central office. Um, it was already on the boards to go ahead and build West Rowan Elementary. And that has been done since we've been here. This year, we're spending forty-five, not this year, but we're allocating money to spend forty-five million for Rowan Cabarrus Community College. We're spending fifty million dollars on Knox. We want to catch up with incentives and we will try to do better. But it is hard to have money enough to go around to everything that everybody would like. And let's hope that we can improve our school system. We've got, I've been trying to talk to superintendents about pre-K schools for the last couple of years because the statistic of kids that are not prepared to come and participate in kindergarten is atrocious. It is awful. But you know how many superintendents that I've talked to in just a couple of years? I've talked to three different superintendents. And this commission wants to support the schools, they really do. And I think you'll find we will do a better job in the future of, of doing that. But everything can't be done at one time. But we are in your corner and we're going to try to do the best we can with supplements. This is a difficult year to try to do some of that. But, but we're going to support the schools and are supporting the schools now at the highest level that there's been in Rowan County. So we thank you for what you've done and we're going to try to meet your expectations as you try to meet our expectations with the most valuable thing we have, which is our children. Thank you. All right, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to wrap this up for us so we can go ahead and vote the way you want to vote. This is my eleventh budget and I have never sat in a budget meeting where there's ever enough money. I don't care how much money's out there, it's never enough. And we have to grind through all of these different requests and decide where it's the best application for the dollars that we have. If we were strictly looking for dollars, we wouldn't cut the tax rate. We'd just leave it where it's at and we can make everybody happy, except all the taxpayers. And that's not what we're here to do. We're here to take care of our citizens and we're here to take care of our children. And, and we definitely want to take care of our school systems. So you'll know, I'm married to a retired school teacher, so I know what I'm talking about. It's not about the money, it's about the commitment. And unless these teachers understand that you've got to be committed to education and not just committed to a paycheck, we're never going to get out of this quadrant we're in. The thing that I'm concerned most about, and nobody wants to talk about it, so this is my chance, hope the press is listening for a change. I've been talking with Senator Ford now for almost two years. And in Raleigh, they're getting ready to come out with school of choice, if you haven't heard about it. And that's a voucher system, which the voucher follows the child. They can take that voucher to public, private, or charter schools. My concern with Knox or the K-8 schools, I call it, we're going to spend fifty-five million dollars to build it and by the time it's built, it's going to be empty because everybody's going to take those vouchers and go to pub, go to private or charter schools. So to me, this is not the time to build that school. We need to wait for eighteen months to see what this economy is going to do and to see what happens in Raleigh as far as who's going to be our leadership. And if this voucher system passes, we won't need to build that school. And the last thing I want to do is put my taxpayers on the line for fifty-five million dollars for a school that's going to be empty. So to me, we're in a hurry to hurry up and do this that we don't need to be, we can wait. They've redistricted those children to other schools. You've got North Rowan Middle sitting over half capacity that can take every child from the middle school over there at Knox. You've got, three miles away, you've got Eisenberg School that's got seventeen acres of land that they own right next door. Go build some classrooms and put the elementary school at Eisenberg. And let's quit wasting all these dollars building schools we don't need. Now, West Elementary was definitely a good move. It needed to be done. It replaced two one-hundred-year-old schools. But as far as anything else, until we see what this voucher system is going to do, think about it. You've got Faith Elementary sitting out there, built a brand-new school because of the, the need. Five hundred students enrolled, which is capacity, and three hundred on a waiting list. So it's obvious this is the wave of the future. You've got Salisbury Academy just bought a building down on Depot Street to put in a high school. You've got North Hills out there building a new high school. How do you think they're going to pay for it? Because this voucher system's coming out and that's where the money's going to come from. So for us to spend fifty-five million dollars on a pipe drain, I'm sorry, I can't, I can't go for that. Now, it's going to pass because the majority of this board wants to do this. But to me, that's not improving education. It's detrimental to the taxpayers. And to me, we could do a whole lot more with fifty-five million dollars going into the classroom than we could ever do building schools. So that's all I got to say. I'm wrapped up, Mr. Chairman, you can do what you want to do.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. All right, any other comments? All right, uh, we've got some amendments, uh, to Fund 101. Do we have a motion to approve, uh, Fund 101 as amended? All in favor, say aye. Uh, Budget Message, Fund 201, Fire District Fund. Motion and a second to approve that fund. All in favor, say aye. Fund 202, Emergency Telephone System Fund. Uh, Motion and a second to approve that fund. All in favor, say aye. Opioid Settlement Fund, Fund 206, Motion and a second to approve. And a second, Commissioner Pearson and Klusman, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Risk Management Fund, Fund 501, Motion and a second to approve. Favor say aye. Landfill Fund, Fund 601, Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Airport Fund, Fund 603, Motion and a second to approve. All in favor, say aye. Water Fund, Fund 605, Motion and a second to approve. All in favor, say aye. DSS Trust Fund, Motion and a second to approve. All in favor, say aye. Fund 702, Fines and Forfeitures, Motion and a second to approve. All in favor, say aye. Uh, Fund 703, ARPA Fund, Motion and a second to approve. All in favor, say aye. Mr. Manager, anything else? Okay, all right, we're going to take a five-minute recess. All right, thank you for being back with us. Uh, we're going to move on to item number, man, what, number seven? No, um, after we went through all of those balance, of those funds, uh, we need to make a motion to approve the budget. So do we have a motion to approve the budget? In a second? Second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? All right, uh, we'll move on to item seven, Public Hearing for HLC 01-23. Aaron, welcome, good to see you.
See you too. All right, we have the, uh, Public Hearing for the Knox Farmhouse Request for a Local Historic Landmark Designation. Uh, this house is located at 915 Knox Road, uh, Tax Parcel 279012. Uh, this house was built circa eighteen fifty-four in the Greek Revival style and is located on a farm owned by the Knox family since the, uh, which has been in operation since the mid seventeen hundreds. This property is significant architecturally as one of the few remaining examples of a wood-framed farmhouse from the antebellum period in rural western Rowan County and for being a well-preserved example of vernacular Greek Revival style in a rural setting. The alterations made to the house have kept in character with the original construction and have facilitated the growth of the family and farming operations. This property is also significant culturally for being a farm seat of a farm that's been in continuous operation since the eighteenth century. Here are the four, uh, facades of the house. So as far as alterations to the house, in circa nineteen hundred, the one-story frame gable roof kitchen aisle was built off the east side of the original one-story aisle. In nineteen thirty-five, the original dining room aisle was raised to two stories in height and the chimney was extended to provide a flue for the bedroom above the dining room. And the one-story kitchen aisle was then remodeled and expanded to include a stair to the new bedroom. A bathroom was also installed in the aisle at that time. Circa nineteen forty, a screen porch was enclosed by folding metal windows. And in, in twenty fifteen, those folding metal cellist windows were replaced with horizontal sliding windows. Well, the designation area includes the house and the point four acres around it. For our procedures today, we need to conduct the public hearing and then approve or table the request and designation ordinance.
Thank you, Aaron. Uh, anything from the Knox family? Not really. No, you can't. What, Jim and I just wanted to say you look pretty good for eighteen fifty-four.
That's what Ed Muir was telling me.
Is that it? Yeah.
About going in eighteen fifty-four. I just, I just, Alfred Wilson, uh, helped me renovate, renovated the house in two thousand twelve when I retired and moved up there. I inherited the house from my aunt. I'm the eighth generation. Uh, Robert's sons are the ninth generation and they both have, uh, grandchildren. So two, the tenth generation is there on the phone. Active phone, been active since the seventeen forties. Uh, the Knoxes came across from Colrain Island in seventeen forty. There's a record of that. They left Colrain Island in seventeen forty and came into Pennsylvania, came down the Pennsylvania wagon trail and squatted in Rowan County before it was Rowan County, so.
Wow, thank you, Mr. Knox.
Was part of the Knox property a land grant?
It, yeah. I guess you would say it's a, uh, land grant. The, the first recorded deed is, uh, May thirteenth, seventeen fifty-eight. Uh, and the, uh, James Stewart was the, um, he was an agent for the Earl of Granville and the farm was, uh, purchased for, uh, I think it was thirteen pounds and twenty-one shillings. It was, the original deed is five hundred and one acres and all that lands in the farm still.
Is that right? All of it still there?
All of it's, part of it got sold, but, uh, my cousins Luke and Jacob Roberts' sons repurchased a part of what had been sold, uh, a while back. At one time, the farm was around two thousand acres and now it's about thirteen hundred acres or something like that.
As you.
Which side of the war did your family fight on in the revolution?
In the revolution, William Knox was, uh, killed at the ramp, at the Battle of Ramscour's Mill for, for our side, for the American side. He was, he was captain in the revolutionary army.
As you know, Jim and I are insurance guys and Jim was reminiscing a minute ago. He wrote the builder's insurance on this originally, so. All right, thank, thank, it's always, always good to see you, thank you. All right, next thing we'll do is we're going to have a public hearing. If anyone would like to say anything about, uh, this classification, then, uh, certainly you're welcome to. If not, then we'll close the public hearing and commissioners, uh, make a motion, we approve HLC 01-23. We have a second, any other discussion? All right, and all in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, thank you. Congratulations and, uh, thank you, guys. Al, thanks for your good work. All right, Pam, Pamela, you go by Pam or Pamela? Pam, Pam's good, okay, Pam, welcome, Pam.
Thank you. Um, just have one on the agenda tonight. It's two roads in a campground. We actually, y'all heard this back in January and the, um, the owner, uh, wanted to do his own names. So he has finally came up with some names and we've gotten them approved. And so last stop of this was just to run this by you and have our public hearing. Um, the two roads that he has came up with names with is Possum Hollow Road and Cordell Cove Road. And so that's, ask that those be named. This is, uh, the campgrounds, actually, Alpha Goodman Lake Road. These are the two, the blue and the yellow that need to be named. Just finishing up the naming and addressing of all the campgrounds.
All right, we'll make short order of this, I think. Uh, we'll open for a public hearing if anyone wants to talk about Possum Hollow or Cordell Cove Road. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and we have a motion to approve the roads of Possum Hollow Road and Cordell Cove Road. In a second? All in favor, say aye. All right, uh, Aaron, you're.
Possum Hollow.
Hollow. So have an, does it have an air, an R? Yeah, well, we're still pronouncing it wrong, holler. Possum Hollow, all right, Aaron.
See if we can maybe sound a little bit. All right, so we have another road naming item on the agenda today. So a little bit of background of this property. So this property originated as the, as, uh, one lot with the house in the center here, uh, owned by Thomas Parsley Jr. and his wife. And in twenty fifteen, at the end of twenty fifteen, he subdivided off a lot to his daughter Lisa on the northern part here where they built their house. And then this year, in twenty twenty-three, he divided a southern tract to his, uh, to his other daughter Caroline. And with that, that became the third house on the road, which prompted needing to be road named. Now, originally, we put this on a plat, that's, that's one of our other options to doing road names is either by plat or do a public hearing like we're doing today. And we originally had placed on the plat a name of Parsley Trail. After the plat was recorded, it came to our attention that this really did need to be brought as a public hearing through a road name petition since there were two parcels involved, not just one parcel at this point. So we got with the property owners, told them about the petition process, sent them a petition and told them that typically we prefer unanimous petition. It makes it easy on you guys because then it's one name, everybody's in agreement and it's easy to bring it up here. But the family, they couldn't all come together with the name, so we received two separate petitions. Uh, one was a majority petition from, uh, Mr. Parsley and Caroline for the name Parsley Trail. And then Paul and Lisa Coger also submitted a petition for a less than majority for the road name Lofty Pines Lane. But with that, uh, you'll need to make a decision on the road name and then have a public hearing as well.
All right, we'll do the public hearing then, how about that? All right, don't go anywhere. All right, we'll open the floor, uh, for a public hearing and we do have someone signed up. And, uh, Mr. Parsley now is when we'll have you come speak. Welcome, we're glad you're here.
Thank you and good evening. Back in ninety-four or ninety-five, I bought that property from a person that I knew. And, uh, at any rate, it was a briar patch and a pine thicket. And I built the road from old tulip down here on the bottom all the way back through that open field into that pine thicket. Had to employ a friend of mine with his dump truck and backhoe. My intentions was to put a rental back there, but the restriction on the property wouldn't allow it, which I didn't, I didn't know it at the time. So at any rate, the only way it could be subdivided was through inheritance. And therefore, I cut off two acres on the backside, Paul and Lisa Coger back there. And it's given to them, the road being finished all the way back from front to rear. And so I deeded that to them for free. And recently, this is back, uh, seven years ago, but recently, my older daughter, I deeded the front part up here, Caroline Theodore Fitchy. And it caused it to have to be named, which I didn't anticipate. But as we sat at the dining room table, my surveyor and I and my wife, he said, what do you want to name the road? And I said, well, you know, Parsley Trail or Parsley Road or whatever. And here, whatever he turned in, somebody made the decision. And the letter came back from City Planning. And here, whatever he turned in, somebody made the decision, and the letter came back from city planning. As of right now, as of immediate, it is called Parsley Trail. My box number was 1050. So I went ahead and did the legwork with the post office, license tag office, and also the three hours worth of waiting up in Moxville at the, at the patrol station. So I did all my legwork here, but I didn't realize it wasn't done right. I heard about it as I was leaving the house. My son-in-law called me and was speaking rather shortly to me about it, but it should have been that everyone should have had a vote on it. I didn't know it at the time, and so here we are. My oldest daughter Caroline votes along with me on Parsley Trail. Of course, I vote Parsley Trail, and Paul, Paul and Lisa, they vote something else. So this is, this is what the debacle's all about. So I'll leave it with that, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, do we have anyone else that would like to speak in a public hearing? Yeah, come on forward. Thanks for being here, we're glad you're here.
I sat here and listened to all these important things you've been speaking of, I kind of feel a little silly.
No, yours is... No, you're just as important, sure.
Sure appreciate it, my name's Paul Coger. And my wife Michelle and daughter Malin is here also, she's going into sixth grade, and this has been a very educational...
Your, your daughter's here?
Yes.
What's her name? Madeline, Madeline, wave it, everyone, there you go, all right.
Yes, sir, it's been a very educational, this are all of our first times being at a, a thing like this, so. Very, very educational, very neat, wonderful thing. I just wanted to thank y'all for giving us your time. I know you, you have other things you need to be doing, and I don't, I'm just gonna make it short and to the point. I just had a little letter here that we wrote up, my wife and I, to kind of just, you know, put, give you a little information about it. So we said, Dear Rowan County Planning Development, Rowan County Board of Commissioners, Rowan County Board of Commissioners, as we were made aware, you heard this already, back in March, the new road name Parsley Trail was assigned incorrectly using the recorded subdivision plat involving only one of the property owners. Efforts have been made to correct this situation per your guidance, using the road name petition process, intending to have all owners the opportunity to rename the road in collaboration together. The property owners were unable to come into agreement together to rename the road using a neutral name, one not resembling a property owner's name or that was chosen by only one person without any other's input, which is what happened. It was, Parsley Trail was chosen by Mr. Parsley on his own, even though it was a mistake. And I wanted to thank Aaron for being so informative. When we did have this question, after we thought about, well, is that how things are done? We weren't consulted with a, a road that we use with Mr. Parsley to be named. And he was very understanding and helpful, and even accepted that he made the mistake. And that was, that was really nice, and he's been just very informative, helpful through this process. Just wanted to thank you for that personally. So, yeah, so Mr. Parsley chose this name, you know, on, on his own, even though he did it mistakenly. So we've tried to talk this over to where we could have input on naming this road where we live. This is our address since 2015, where Lord willing, we're gonna be for the next 20, 30, 40 years. It's a neat thing, I've never had this opportunity before to be able to name a permanent address where I've lived. So it's, it's kind of a neat thing and important to us, we thought it was neat. So we, since March, we've been trying to, you know, work, work, since we received this letter and, and worked together. But we haven't, you know, come to any, to any kind of agreement. We would just like to, many attempts and phone calls, in-person meetings with all property owners, seeking cooperation for all, from all parties. We have offered to make the change of address a smooth process by reimbursing any prior change of address fees paid thus far, and any fees that are needed to move forward with the new name as well to Mr. Mrs. Parsley. We would reimburse any fees and also go online, or his daughter and I, to help him choose this, do the DMV things that you don't have to wait three hours for. We've offered that, and it still is, this hearing today is still offered. But we've been declined at every point to try to choose a name that is, that we all can agree on together and, and choose that's an inclusive name, not a divisive name, like last names. That's not, my last name is Coger, his is Parsley, hers is Teodora Vichy. So we thought, what, what about something nice like Lofty Pines, Meadow Acres, anything that we could agree upon? But it, this, it wouldn't happen, it just couldn't happen. Let's see, I'm sorry, I got off the track. We, we have offered, okay, I did that, I said that. We wanted to provide this information to you so that you are fully aware of the attempts made to follow the petition naming guidelines at this point in time, since the property owners cannot choose a new name together. We feel that is in everyone's best interest for the Board of Commissioners to rename the road using a new neutral name to avoid any further conflict. Thank you all so much for your time, guidance, and consideration during this difficult process. It's been a little difficult, Paul, Michelle, Coger, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, anyone else? Yes, ma'am, welcome. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Caroline Teodora Vichy, own the South. It's been recently given to me as part of my inheritance. My dad was the first property owner, and of course, he gave Michelle her inheritance and then mine recently. I was not aware of certain protocols that had to come in the where, the right of way would have to be named when a third person comes in ownership or inheritance. I was not aware of any kind of protocol. I showed up one day after my dad said, hey, Caroline, come and see, I've got, you know, the surveyor just left, we have all the markings laid out for you and everything, and I said, sure. So he was showing me, you know, here's this, this is where this stops, and this is your part. And I said, well, thanks, Dad, and he said, Nate, the name's gonna be Parsley Trail. I said, okay, thanks, Dad. I didn't think twice about it. My dad is freely giving me this land that he worked hard for. So I had no problem with him naming it, rightfully so. But I do understand that there are protocols and rules, and if there are such in place, that's fine. Not against any rules or protocols. There has been disagreement in the family over this, yes. I have tried to maintain my neutrality as far as verbal interaction with infractions, arguments. I stay neutral. I do vote with my dad on Parsley Trail because, again, he gave that to me freely. Lost my train of thought, sorry about that. But yes, we do, please help us make peace with this road name. We would appreciate all your help, and thanks so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? All right, we'll close the public hearing. So we're asked to do one of two things. Come up with a name on our own? I mean, ask to come up with our own name, maybe? About Jim Green Trail.
That sounds good to me.
All right, we could do that.
Don't do that to those folks.
Yeah. I, I, our choice is to make one party mad or two parties, two parties mad. And, yeah. Craig says, get in line, right? Yeah.
All right, I'll make the motion, I'll be the bad guy. I'll make a motion that we name the road Parsley Trail.
All right, further discussion?
I just want to talk to the family for a minute. And I know I'm gonna be out of line, but I'm a retired pastor, so I gotta take advantage of the situation. I just hope when this decision's done, that you all can get together, because it sounds like there's been some real hurt feelings, and hurt feelings bring anger. And anger can turn into a separation that lasts a lifetime, and life is too short. So like the Good Book says, please forgive and accept that from each other. That's all I can say.
Is that a motion to forgive? Making a motion? Yeah, in five seconds, guys, I've made some... Life's too short to not love your family. Wish I had some time back. We have a motion in a second, all in favor say aye, aye, all right. Sorry to y'all, but we'll move on to our next item. The board is asked to enter a closed session pursuant... Oh my goodness, what have I done? I was actually seeing if y'all were paying attention. All right, Airport Advisory Board, we have two applications for John Delmar Denny and Jeffrey Allen Matthews. Also, and those are for business community seats, also Gary Del Perry applied for the pilot seat, so motion to approve these three? Say aye?
Aye.
Atwell Township Volunteer Fire Department Commissioners, we received three applications, Mr. Frank Green, Bryant Clark, and Kenneth Cole, motion in a second.
Motion, Paul, three.
All right, all in favor say aye. JCPC, William Downs for the Faith Community, motion for William. All in favor say aye. Aaron Moody reapplied for general seat on JCPC, motion in a second for Aaron. All in favor say aye, aye. Locks Volunteer Fire Department, Brent Mincy applied for one of two seats, motion in a second for Brent. All in favor, aye. Miller's Ferry Fire Department, three applications for reappointment, Joe Scott Luckadoo, Jimmy Shane Walford, and Clyde Stewart Ash, motion in a second, please. All in favor say aye. Rowan Transit System Advisory Board, Courtney Gordon applied for at-large seat, motion in a second for Courtney. All in favor say aye. Union Volunteer Fire Department Commissioners, Eric Dean Brady applied for one of three seats, motion in a second. All in favor, a second. All in favor say aye. We have 50 vacancies right now. So if you want to get involved in your community, and we would ask you to, please contact our board clerk, go online, find something you like, and get involved, how's that? All right, now, the board is asked to enter a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 14331811A1 to consider approval of the minutes of the closed session held on June 5, 2023, as prescribed by North Carolina General Statute 143318.10E, providing that minutes or an account of a closed session may be withheld from public inspection, so long as public inspection would frustrate the purpose of a closed session, who writes this stuff? And pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 14331811A3, to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve attorney-client privilege regarding a matter involving Milbridge Speedway in Rowan County. Make this in the form of a motion, we have a second. All in favor say aye. We'll get started here, and just as soon as you guys, oh, man, you know what? Before you leave, we've got guests here that I forgot to, to, to bring attention to. We have folks that are with us to, to repeat, as we have in, in prior meetings, our good manager Aaron Church is bringing a lot of our local leadership folks through a leadership training process, and we have some of our folks here today, raise your hand and say hi, introduce yourself to our group. Well, thank you for being here. Well, thank you guys for being here. I know you're just fulfilling a requirement of Aaron's class, but we appreciate your investment in your own leadership and in our community, so thanks for being here. All right, now everyone else get out, and we're reconvening closed session here in just a couple minutes, thank you. All right, we're back, we're back out of closed session, and there's one correction we need to make per our board clerk, Sarah? Oh, boy.
I nominate Jeffrey Matthews.
Is that from Design Nature, Nature Scape? Yeah, I'll second that, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right, no other business, motion to adjourn?
We gotta come out of closed session first.
We did, yeah.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor say aye, thank you all.